Counsel Barton, absent. Counsel Cahill?
Present.
Counsel Capano?
Present.
Counsel Chakoudas?
Present.
Counsel Calucci?
Present.
Counsel Seer?
Present.
Counsel Lapierre?
Present.
Counsel Lozey?
Present.
Counsel Net?
Present.
Counsel Trahan?
Present.
Counsel Walsh?
Present.
Before I ask everybody to rise for a moment of silence, Buzzzy's seat is empty tonight because his brother-in-law passed away, Pat Barton's husband, two days ago. So Lorenzo Dabney was Buzzzy's brother-in-law. And Pat serves on the Licensing Committee. So I know everyone's heart. And prayers are with the Barton family tonight. So please rise for a moment of silence.
Please keep in mind the family of Ms. Alice Kirby as well, Mr. President.
And also the Crowden family.
And the family of Robert Daugh.
Mr. President, the victims of the Manchester terrorist attack.
I pledge allegiance to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Except minutes, meeting minutes from April 25th. So moved.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearings?
The petition of Fiesta Shows to hold a carnival at Keene Park from June 1st through June 4th, with the setup beginning on May 29th, 2017. The hours will be Thursday and Friday, 5:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. And Saturday and Sunday, 1:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m.
Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Please state your name and your address, sir.
John Flynn, I'm the Vice President of Fiesta Shows here tonight if there's any questions.
Okay, thank you. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Seeing none, that part of the hearing is closed. Anyone in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
Yeah.
Sir, please come to the mic. Please state your name and your address.
My name is Tony Hill. I live at 83 Memorial Park Avenue, Lynn. And this is my 21st year coming here, trying to get that carnival from being presented on our field. And hopefully this year, we can get something taken care of, either get it moved further back towards the school and then get away from the houses, or put it on the other side of the field so somebody else can come here and complain every year. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hill. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone else? Seeing none, that part of the hearing is closed. Counsel Trahan?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to make a motion to approve, and with a stipulation that we move the carnival this year to the other side of the armed street, just to kind of take turns with the neighbors back and forth. I know Mr. Hill's been coming for years and I've been to his house numerous times when they've been loud. So I like to put that in the stipulations, that we move it to the other side of the field this year if we could. And with that, I'll make a motion to approve.
Seconded. Motion made with the stipulation seconded. Any discussion? Roll call.
Counsel Barton, absent. Counsel Cahill?
Yes.
Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Counsel Chakoudas?
Yes.
Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Counsel Seer?
Yes.
Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Counsel Lozey?
Yes.
Counsel Net?
Yes.
Counsel Trahan?
Yes.
Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Next public hearing?
There's a petition of Market Basket for a sign permit at 40 Federal Street.
Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Please state your name and your address, sir.
My name is Craig Moore. I'm here on behalf of Barlow Signs. The address is 153 Greeley Street in Hudson, New Hampshire. And Market Basket is seeking approval to install three illuminated wall signs on their new store on Federal Street. One on the storefront, above the main entrance, and then one on the, there's a southeast tower. And they're looking to sign both sides of that tower. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else? Seeing none, that part of the hearing is closed. Anyone in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone in opposition? Seeing none, that part of the hearing is closed. Counsel Walsh?
Thank you, Mr. President. I've reviewed this and seen the signs, and it looks like the project is moving right along over there. They're moving at a fast pace. I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Seconded. Motion made, seconded, discussion. Roll call.
Counsel Barton, absent. Counsel Cahill?
Yes.
Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Counsel Chakoudas?
Yes.
Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Counsel Seer?
Yes.
Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Counsel Lozey, absent. Counsel Net?
Yes.
Counsel Trahan?
Yes.
Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Next public hearing?
Motion passes.
Petition of All Day Convenience Store at 548 Summer Street for a beer and wine license.
Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Please state your name and your address, sir.
Yes, if it please the counsel, my name is Arthur Pearlman. I represent Kasha Patel, who's here, K.D. Patel, and Maruti S.K. Inc., which is the corporation. They're seeking a transfer and a change of location of the package store wine and malt beverage license currently held by Tony the Florist at the premises of 696 Western Avenue. And they're transferring it to Maruti and the All Day Convenience at 548 Summer Street. Maruti is a mass corporation. K.D. is the sole officer-director shareholder. Mr. Patel currently is living in Waltham at 109 Raphael Drive. He has worked at a business in Waltham that has a convenience store with a beer and wine license. He has an ownership interest in a convenience store with a beer and wine license in Newton. These two businesses are operated with family members. He's going to be doing the same with this business in Lynn. He is doing the same, as we speak, with this business in Lynn. Neither Mr. Patel nor anyone who works at his store has ever sold to a minor or violated any rule or regulation regarding the sale of alcohol. Mr. Patel has already been involved in the liquor business and familiar with the laws regarding Chapter 138. He has completed TIPS training. Has the certification. He will uphold the law. He will also make sure that any rules and regulations particular to Lynn, he'll make sure to become familiar with them and use them. I would ask that if there are people speaking in opposition, that I be allowed to respond after that to any particular...
You can't, sir. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Please approach the podium, state your name and your address, sir.
Mark Adrian, Wentworth Place. I'm in favor of having the liquor and wine at the convenience store.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Please state your name and your address, sir.
Yes, hi. John Alzar, 25 Locust Street, Lynn, Mass. I've known the owners of Tony the Florist for many years, going back to my mother's age, at least 60 years. They're a reputable family. They run a fine business. They've been a major contributor to the city of Lynn and many organizations. And they work very hard. And they've tried to reinforce or refine their business and have an opportunity down the road. And I think they've chosen a great provider that can run the business very well. I am in favor of the transfer.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor?
My name is Herbert French. I live at 46 Rand Street, Lynn. And I am in favor of this transfer. I work in the area and think that it would be an improvement. And that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. French. Please state your name and your address, sir.
My name is Joseph Seoda. I live at 53 Atlantic Terrace, Lynn, Massachusetts. I'm in favor of this petition because I think that it'll be very good for the area and the neighborhood. The owner, as I understand, is a, he'll run a clean operation. And he's a new person to Lynn. And I think he should be given every opportunity to develop his business interests and produce more benefits for the city.
Thank you. Please state your name and your address, sir.
My name is also Joe Seoda. I live in, Joe Jr. I live in Nahat, 46 Maple Ave. And I'm the president of Tony the Florist that owns the license that's being transferred. And I feel that the license could be best used in another location. We've had it for many years, and the nature of our business has changed, so we don't really use it to the extent that we could. And I think the location for Mr. Patel would be an ideal spot for it and a good addition to the community. So I'm in favor.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else? Seeing none, that part of the hearing is closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Please state your name and your address.
My name is Linda Thornton. I live at 82 Myrtle Street. I think liquor stores should be in liquor, should be in stores, not into convenience stores. There's enough of them already, and there's too many access for kids to have alcohol. And I really think that we have enough liquor stores. So I'm sorry, but that's how I feel.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Sheila Ford. I live at 89 Woodman Street. And I strongly oppose to any liquor license selling beer and wine in a convenience store. And I don't understand when there is already a... I believe that you should buy your liquor at a liquor store, not in a convenience store. And where they want to put this is so close to a liquor store already. So I oppose it.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Please state your name and your address.
Yeah, hi, my name is Leanne Tran. So I'm the owner of Jimmy Liquor in Lynn, 873 Western Ave. So the convenience store, we open just next to my store. So I just don't allow them to open because I think it's too many liquor stores and too many convenience stores in towns already. So that neighborhood is very dangerous. People over there are the neighborhood. I try to stop selling for all the people early in the morning because they drink early in the morning and tonight. So I know who are the best. So we see all that bad people over there. So we stopped selling for them that much. They tell that, I try to tell them, just don't drink too much too early. Then they come at nighttime. I say, I don't sell for you no more. So you have to go home and sleep and take a rest. So we try to stop, not sell them much. So that's why I come here. I don't want any more liquor store and any more convenience store open in that neighborhood out in the back there. It's no good for them. So that's why I came here to say, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone else? Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Please state your name and your address, sir.
My name is Jimmy Ho, and I'm the owner of the liquor store, Jimmy's Liquor. And because that's how he tried to open, just across the street from my store, that's the one I just wanted against them. Too close, very close. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone else? Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, that part of the hearing is closed. Counsel Capano?
Yes. So this issue has come up a number of times over the past 10 years or so. And I've even had meetings at Drudge School, where we've had, you know, 40, 50 people attend. Where people have just been opposed to having beer and wine at that particular store for a number of reasons. There's a roaming house across the street, and police have been there. I mean, you could count, you know, how many times, you know, dozens of times a year. It's just a problem that I know is the city's responsibility to take care of, and it's no fault of the owner that's there. I would like to say that I agree. Tony the Florist is a very respected business. The previous owner, who wanted beer and wine there, you know, and had approached me a couple times in the past, was a very respected owner in the neighborhood, too. And there's just very strong neighborhood opposition to it. So I would just like to make a motion to deny this request.
Seconded. Motion made to deny, seconded, discussion. Counsel Cahill?
Thank you, Mr. President. And I humbly respect the opinion of Counsel Capano. I will be supporting his opinion, as I have many, many, many times before. But I'd just like to point out, this is the second time the Seoda family has tried to sell their license responsibly. First time in Ward 1, now in Ward 6. These folks are longtime business owners in the city of Lynn. They're a great family. If there's a way for the city to work with these folks, for them to have an ability to sell a beer and wine license, by the way, not a full liquor license, a beer and wine license that they had obtained when folks liked to do beer or wine baskets as gifts. But that market has fallen out.
Right.
So if we could work with them as a city, maybe our economic development team or someone in the city could work with them. They're desperately trying to sell this asset. And I don't blame them for wanting to sell that. They try to find responsible owners. If we could work with them, that'd be very helpful because they really do care about who they sell to. I don't think it's the candidates that have been lacking. It's the locations that apparently have been controversial. So if the councils can maybe suggest some ideas of folks that you know in your wards that would be interested in this. I think the Seoda family is very amenable to selling it to whomever. But we should try to find a place for them relocate their beer and wine license. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Cahill. Counsel Capano?
I just wanted to say, I failed to mention that this is no reflection on the new owner of the establishment either. And I've offered to work with the Seoda family. I would like to help. Everything you said, I agree with. I would like to, nothing better than to accommodate them in some way, and would try to do that, you know, for myself.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Counsel Barton, absent. Counsel Cahill?
Yes.
Yes to deny. Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Yes to deny. Counsel Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes to deny. Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes to deny. Counsel Seer?
Yes.
Yes to deny. Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes to deny. Counsel Lozey?
Yes.
Yes to deny. Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes to deny. Counsel Trahan?
Yes.
Yes to deny. Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes to deny.
No other public hearings? Public hearings need to be set down.
We have the petition of Scott Finley to convert a single family to a two-family with the second unit in the basement. Petitions of mobility to attach, maintain, and operate cell communication equipment on existing poles at the following locations: Western Ave and Barrett Street, 16 Tremont Street and Market Street, 22 Tracy Ave and Waus Street. Petitions by Comcast for a grant of location to provide service at the following locations: 150 Market Street, 64 Baldwin Street, 415 Linway.
Set them down. Motion made to set them down, seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion made to set them down. Committee reports.
I'm sorry, excuse me.
All business?
Yeah, all business. Counselor Chakoudas?
Counsel Chakoudas, 80 Central Ave.
Yeah, I'd like to take off the table. Takaro Donna Julia, 80 Central Ave, with the permission for them to have all alcohol in the existing building from 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., Monday through Sunday. And it's going to be a restaurant, not really a bar area. They're going to have a small bar with only, I think it was, seven bar stools only.
Seven bar stools.
And a motion to approve.
Motion to approve with the stipulations, seconded by Counsel Trahan. Roll call.
Counsel Barton, absent. Counsel Cahill?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Seer?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lozey?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Trahan?
Yes.
Yes. And Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries. Committee reports. Budget Committee.
Mr. President, unanimous approval of the Budget Committee.
Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ways and Means Committee. Counsel Trahan?
As your name is voted, the committee, motion to accept.
Motion made to accept. Roll call.
Counsel Barton, absent. Counsel Cahill?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Seer?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lozey?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Trahan?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes.
I'd also like to make a motion for an emergency.
Motion for an emergency? Seconded.
I'm going to read all four. Transfer the sum of $18,354 from the Reserve to the police payroll and longevity to fund unanticipated police department staff retirement payout. Transfer the sum of $3,250 from the Reserve to fund miscellaneous expense items not funded properly during the FY '17 budget process, as well as to cover unexpected overtime payroll costs due to staff retirement and unexpected long-term absence. Certify as an available fund the amount of $15,000 as allotted to the city of Lynn by the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection for the recycling IQ kit for curbside communities, another SMRP initiative. And finally, order that the statutory demand fee for delinquent tax payments be set at $30 pursuant to Section 15 of Chapter 60 of the general laws.
Motion for an emergency was made, seconded. Roll call.
Counsel Barton, absent. Counsel Cahill?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Seer?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lozey?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Trahan?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes.
License Committee, Counsel Walsh.
Thank you. Unanimous vote of committee, motion to approve.
Motion made, seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public Properties, Counsel Net?
Mr. President, the committee voted unanimously to accept, make motion to approve.
Seconded.
Motion made to approve, seconded. All those in favor? New business. Counsel.
I'd just like to thank the GE Aviation River Works. Last week, they came in with 150 volunteers, and they did Vileen's Playground, Ames Playground, Gallagher Park, and Frye Playground. They basically came in and brought in the mulch, the loom, the paint, nuts, bolts, wood, grass seed. These parks look unbelievable if anybody's in the area drive by. And a special thank you to Lisa and Eric from the DPW for coordinating this. The only thing the DPW had to do was let them borrow rakes and shovels. So we just want to say thank you. They did a great job on the parks.
Counsel Chakoudas. Any other business? No. I've had to do anything. I'm going to ask Counselor Trahan to come and, he's going to make a, a statement. I'm going to stand beside him because he's my brother, he's my friend, and he's my colleague. I've known him since I was five years old. I respect him more than I respect any other man. He does more for the city than any Counselor does. And I mean that. When Counselor Chakutis just talked about the parks, he's there every Saturday with his crew of guys and he pays them out of his pockets. A lot of people don't know that. He uses his equipment, puts more time in than any one of us. And it's a hard thing for me to do, to do.
Well, this is a tough way for, uh, me to get up here, I guess, at the podium, but I got to do what I got to do to get up here, I guess. But, um, uh, as everybody knows, about six months ago, everybody at home that doesn't know, I know, I talked to a lot of my colleagues, um, I had a heart, a pretty bad heart attack. Uh, I spent a lot of time at Mass General. And now I've had, you know, over the last six months, I've had a few, you know, different circumstances where my heart's been going out of rhythm and, um, I've got a leak into my valve and, uh, I just, I need, I need, I need a little more time to rest. And after soul searching and many hours of talking to my family, my friends, my colleagues, my cardiologist, my surgeon and, and everybody else, they, at this time, they don't think that it's the right time for me to be running a campaign. Um, I run a full-time business, as everybody knows, in the city. That has to come first for my family and the people that I employ, which are mostly Lynn guys. Um, and I didn't want to leave it to the end. I wanted Ward Two to be represented well, as I've tried to do over the last 18 years. So, you know, I didn't want to do it. I think I, I need to do it for myself and for my family and for my health. I'm going to get better, it's going to take some time. Um, so I just wanted to just thank everybody at City Hall for over the last 18 years that have just been so, so good to me. I said, Law Department right here, I mean, the hours we've spent, um, everybody, no one has ever said no to me in this city, no one at City Hall. I, I'm not here 18 years without the people that, that work at City Hall, DPW. I know, Diana just mentioned Lisa and Eric, all those people, they work so, so hard. And like I say, none of us would be here without City Hall, without all the wheels turning. So I'd just like to thank all those people. Terry, she's been, she's been my, my best friend. It's so, um, I'm so sad I have to leave. Uh, I'm here, you're all here over the years. Janet, all you guys, I was in the hospital for a month and you guys did everything for me. You did everything for me, like family. Um, but I just wanted to thank all of you. I wanted to give the, the city a time to find a good representative for, um, for, for Ward Two. I think I've left it in pretty good condition. Um, I've done, over 18 years, I've done a lot of playgrounds and paved a lot of streets and pumped a lot of basements with Counselor Sear and plowed a lot of streets with a lot of my colleagues and I just want my colleagues to know that I'm not, I'm not going anywhere. I'm still going to be there for those things. When you need a street that got missed plowing, or you got in a flood, or you need a dumpster for a cleanup or a playground, you need 20 guys, I want you to be able to come to me and, you know, because I want to stay involved. I want to be a contender to volunteer and donate and help the kids of the city and make it, you know, a better place to live. Um, I'd just like to say to my, um, colleagues, this is, out of my 18 years, this is one of my best, best and funnest, um, council. You guys have been unbelievable. We're on the verge of great things, great, great things in this city. And it's because of all of you, you've, you've done a great job. And I just want all of you to know that I, you know, I don't know how much clothes I carry in this city, but I am going to be endorsing all of you. I'll be standing behind all of you. You guys deserve to be re-elected. You're a wonderful bunch of people. I've had some proud moments up here and throughout the city and over the years. Uh, I got to see a new police station, a new manor field, a new thoroughfare marshal. Um, just in the last couple of years, the proud, proud moments I had was, uh, my proudest moment of all 18 years is seeing my best friend, um, Council President Sear elected up here to Council President. That was just, uh, that was just unbelievable. That was the best thing for me. I'm so glad I was here to vote for him. He has been a bulldog in this city. He doesn't even just worry about his own ward, he cares about the whole city. I want everybody to know that, along with all my colleagues. They all care about everybody. Um, I don't know what else to say. I'm, I'm sad I have to leave. I want to come back. I'm not done yet, I just got to get better and I'm going to get better. And, uh, I'm going to come back and try to take your seats, I guess, I don't know. But, um, I just wanted everybody to know that I love you very much, you've always been so good to me. I know you're going to continue to be good to me. I want to continue to be good to you. I want to be there for all of you. Like I say, in an election, I'm going to do as much as I can for all of you as my heart will let me. Um, so don't be afraid to call me, I have a lot of bodies to help. Um, again, thanks to everybody at City Hall and all the departments, you've been wonderful. Terry is my most wonderful person in the whole world here, one of them. Um, but, you know, I'd just like to say thank you again and please, you know, reach out to me because I want to stay involved. Thank you.
I think there's only one thing Billy can do for me, and I know I'm just speaking for the rest of you, is just get himself better.
That's right.
That's it, that's all I ask.
May God have his hand on you, Billy.
Thanks, Bill. Is there any other business? Counselor Cahill?
We can't end on that note, Mr. President. I think we all have a little bit to say tonight. As a resident of Ward Two, I can tell you that Counselor Trahan is a tremendous Counselor, one not just for short term but for ages. We are surrounded by pictures of councils who have served into the 1800s. Uh, and Counselor Trahan deservatively will take his place amongst the greatest of city councils ever to serve this city. To think I've served with you for 10 years, Billy, which is apparently is one of the newer members, although we've had some great folks joining us in the interim. Folks didn't run against you, Bill, and there's a reason why. It's because Bill always took care of his constituents and his neighbors and his friends. He did a great job for the city of Lynn and he didn't do it for fanfare. Today, politicians are on Twitter and they're on Facebook and they're all about themselves. Bill, you are what was always good and pure about politics. You did it for, not recognition, you did it for, you did it for the people. You did it because it was right. We need more Bill Trahants in the world and unfortunately, right now, we don't have enough of you. You may be going, you may be leaving us for a short time and I am very honored to leave this chamber with you. But you are far from done, I assume. You can help it. You will, um, continue to help your colleagues, you'll be, continue to help the Little Leagues and the Pup Wonders and all the other groups you help out. It's been an honor to serve with you. I really, truly, um, am better off because I've met you. As a resident of Ward Two, on behalf of all of them, I say thank you very much for the great work you've done for us. You're still our neighbor, we want you to be healthy, first and foremost, most importantly, we want you to be healthy. Uh, and, and you've really made your mark on this city. And for that, I thank you very much, from me and my family.
Counselor Walsh?
Just want to say, Billy, thank you. I, I, I think, you know, when, when you look to run or you have the idea of running to become a Counselor, um, you were inspiration to me. I, you know, I, I learned firsthand, you know, you know, hey, take the keys to the machine, help out a neighbor, you know, you were always there. Um, and, you know, I appreciate that. Um, you just teach people how to do it the right way and care about your neighbors and I want to thank you for that, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Josh. Counselor Capano?
Yeah, I just got one question. Can I still have Dumpster Day? No, for, for, for Ward Six residents that don't know, when we have a few of those Dumpster Days in the spring and some of those dumpsters and all the help comes from Billy Trahan, wouldn't be able to do it without him. I, I always appreciated all his help and I have tremendous respect for Bill. And, um, you know, I wish you well and, um, yeah, I got a feeling you could be back. Thank you for your service, Bill. Thank you.
Counselor Net?
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor Trahan, I have the pleasure and honor to serve you for the last six years. And, um, I know you will come back to us, you will not leave us for, for good. And, uh, we, we love you, we care about you and you love our, our city and, and you care about us. And, um, we are very fortunate, our city very fortunate to have you sit in this chamber with us, make the most important decision for our city. And we move our city forward together. I'm very honored, again, like, uh, just like the rest of the counselors said, you are one of the fewest elected official in our city. I'm proud to be your friend, your colleague, and I will continue to call upon you when I need you. I know you will answer my, my call as always. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Hong. Counselor Lapierre?
Um, thank you, Mr. President. I may be new Counselor to this chamber, but my friendship to Counselor Trahan goes back decades. And, uh, his, his, uh, his family on Harvest Street many years and Billy, I mean, um, you know, went to school at English, '78, graduated, gave so much to this city in return, asked for nothing. When he start, when he, when he went campaigning and he, as he often does, as Counselor Walsh alluded to, it's like taking a page out of that playbook of Bill Trahan's. He was the master of, and still is, getting back to people, serving people, knocking on their doors tirelessly. And I bet that's one of the reasons that because of his passion, doesn't feel like perhaps the hot can do that this summer and into the fall. And that's quite a loss because this man cares about people, cares about his ward. He served with distinction and honor for 18 years, his kids, his family. Leaves such a legacy on the ward, but also, uh, across the city, really. And, uh, I know my family and I, such a deep impact in our decision for, to run for public office, our decisions that we make while serving are all mirrored after the greatness of, um, Counselor Trahan. And, and the love that he has for the city and the love that he has for his community and everyone who works in the city and gets behind in the city and his word is, is bond and just so many great qualities that, um, people should have as they lead their lives. And, um, I can't wait for you to be back in some capacity. I know, you know, number one is your health, as always, as it would be for any of us. And I know how difficult this decision has to be for you, but just know that you are making the right decision for yourself and your parents and your family who loves you so much and that we are standing right behind you firmly with everything you've done for the city and we will continue in that regard to represent you and the values that you hold dearly as you want to help people in this city. And that's our mission and that's our only agenda, this council. And it's been a really wonderful experience in the 18 months I've been able to, you know, call you my friend and a colleague, which is more important to me. And I would add that no one has asked Billy, um, dibs on his trucks on Election Day yet, so I would be the first to ask for your trucks come Election Day. Thank you. Love you, Bill.
Hey, Counselor Brian? Counselor Lozey?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, we've heard a lot of good things tonight that are very true about Bill, my long friend.
Tell us a few bad ones.
Not too many. I'll tell you, with, with Bill Trahan, it, it, he found a way to solve a compromise if he had to. And, uh, he was always quick and willing to do that. Um, we heard a lot of selfless acts that Bill has done on a regular basis. We've all heard that there's no greater love does a man have than to give his own life. And Bill has given his life to this city. And, uh, he exemplifies what a servant is and he has for the 18, I've been here 14 years and he's just been a good servant. And we're going to miss him deeply, but like he said, he's not going anywhere and we're glad of that. And, uh, I don't want to be redundant on anything that's been said already. I'm glad you're, you're doing what's best for you, Bill, and, uh, get better and get back here. Thank you, Bill.
Thanks, Wayne.
Thank you, Wayne. Mr. President? Counselor Capano?
All that said tonight, ditto, Billy, ditto.
No one says it any better. Thank you, Rich.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made to adjourn?
Seconded.
Seconded.
(inaudible).
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 (inaudible).[1799.86]